Hold me up.
Sometimes.
Maybe a long drive.
Sometimes.
I don't.
Okay, you don't have to accept them.
Want to have him try again?
And get on. Links and balance with this ID. That problem.
I checked it this morning as. Get down here. It's already started.
Does it show the meeting ID number anywhere there? Yeah, there's a meeting ID on the floor. I just want to verify that it doesn't match. Meeting info.
Does she have the meeting ID number in the passcode?
Do you want this?
A copy of it? Picture?
If you need. Three six.
You didn't try.
Oh, paper says six two. That says six three.
What could be six three?
Six three.
Not six two.
Three, six, three?
Catch, Mr. Chairman.
Six.
Mine says six.
Still, yeah.
Yep. That could be why.
Invalid.
That's why it's invalid.
And you came back.
Join?
Oh, I really did. Not happy.
Can we have Mike try to change that?
Well. But change this meeting ID to a six.
Well, he can. Post this one. He can modify this and repost, but that's Christopher.
Good.
Look at this. Look at this.
Not happy.
You want to get started, I guess.
Okay.
Well, good.
All right, so we now have six thirty-three. Begin meeting number nineteen oh four of the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. We're located live in the John Daly Room of the East Windsor Town Hall, as well as on the Zoom platform. We're going to begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with no end.
Okay. We have a quorum. We have all five regular members plus one alternate. We have no added agenda item. There were three legal notices. First one is the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM. Details regarding how to attend will be published on the commission's agenda will be made available on the town's website. At PZ twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, the applicant owner is East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will request a text amendment to the East Windsor Zoning Regulations Section six oh two sign regulations. A full copy of the application is available on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage of the town's website. All interested persons may attend this meeting and provide verbal or written comments regarding this application. And this was posted in the Journal Inquirer on September twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and again on September nineteenth. Next legal notice, the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM. Details regarding how to attend will be published on the commission's agenda and will be made available on the town's web page, website. PZ twenty twenty-three dash twenty, PZ twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three. The applicant owner is James Guarino is requesting a re-subdivision, one rear lot located at forty Barber Hill. Map nineteen, block sixty-eight, lots thirteen dash zero dash thirteen. Zone is an A one. Full copy of his application is available on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage of the town's website. All interested persons may attend this meeting and provide verbal or written comments regarding this application. It disappeared in the Journal Inquirer on September twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and again on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Third legal notice is the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM. Details regarding how to attend will be published on the commission's agenda will be made available on the town's website. PZ twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four, the applicant owner is Mark and Laura Ackerman is requesting a re-subdivision, one rear lot located at fifty Barber Hill. Map nineteen, block sixty-eight, lot thirteen dash forty-one, and zone A one. Full copy of the application is available on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage of the town's website. All interested persons may attend this meeting and provide verbal or written comments regarding this application. It disappeared in the Journal Inquirer on September twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and again on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Okay. We are at the public participation portion of our meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on something that is not on tonight's agenda? Do have. Is there anyone online that would like to comment on something that is not on tonight's agenda? Looking, silence is no, move on. Approval minutes, the minutes of our last meeting, September ninth, twenty twenty-five. Does anyone have any edits? Comments, corrections?
I would just, I think it's okay because in the line seventy-eight to eighty-four, it's clear what the motion was for correcting the minutes. But then in line eighty-eight and eighty-nine, the text strikes the bad acronym. But it doesn't insert um NCHD. I think it's clear because of the language above. But.
Yeah.
It's kind of your call if you want.
I'll just, I'll just add it in and replace the strikeout to.
That's what I would have done.
PhD. Okay. Anything else?
For me?
Line twenty-seven. Area spelled S H E R R Y. It should be S H A R Y.
Hey? Hey, does anyone have, has anything else? Now I'm bringing a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from our Tuesday, September ninth, meeting nineteen oh three. Correcting line twenty-seven, dispel Sherry correctly. And in line eighty-eight and eighty-nine, inserting the letters N C H D, all capitals, after the strikeout.
We have a motion to approve the minutes as amended. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Stacy. Any further discussion? Hearing none or call for vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Mention.
Our new, new applications to receive. Performance bonds, actions, permit extensions, road acceptance. Going to our continued public hearing. Easy twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, the applicant is NRT Realty LLC. The owner is the estate of Joseph Latta Jr., Deborah A. Morel, and Adam Vaughn is requesting a special use permit site plan review in accordance with section eight seventeen dash four of the Windsor Regulations for a mixed-use multifamily commercial development located at the following addresses, one thirteen, one twenty-five, one twenty-seven, one thirty-one, one thirty-three, Bridge Street, map one eleven, block twelve, lots four, eight, nine, ten, and eleven, and the zone is planned commercial development. Who's here to speak on behalf of this application?
Good evening, JR three, JR Russo and Associates here representing the applicant NRT Realty. Bob Trigg is also here with us this evening, my partner Dana Steele. Scott Hesketh is also here for any traffic questions. And online we have our architect Kristen Robbins and our landscape architect Dominic, both with BL Companies. If there are any questions coming from, from there. If you recall at the last meeting, we went through a fairly lengthy presentation. Don't plan on doing that again tonight. There were some questions that came up and Dana has made some modifications to the plans. I think we've answered most of the questions and he's going to go through those in just a minute. But before we get to that, one of the things that did come up that I wanted to talk about a little bit was with regard to the detention basin that's located over here to the west of the site. And the discussion there revolved around a fence or protection of, of the basin from children, maybe that might be living here on the property or somebody else that, that might be on the property and the fact that the basin has a permanent pool that's four feet deep in the middle and then shallows out around the edge, which is typical of most detention basins. So after thinking about it for a while, and I guess before I even go any further, if it's the commission's wish to have a fence around it, the developers are, they said, sure, we'll do that. It's, it's, it's not a big deal. It's not a huge expense in terms of looking at this project. But in, in thinking about it, I, and I thought around town and other projects we've worked on, and we've done hundreds of detention basins. And, and I can recall this coming up in the past with other commissions, and I can't remember specifically which ones they were. I don't think it was East Windsor. Where they thought maybe a fence ought to go around the basin, but I can't remember where we ever did one. And then I started thinking about what's around town here in East Windsor, and I thought, well, the mansion's a canyon ridge we did, and there's a basin there. It's not a wet basin though, because this one goes back a number of years. Regulations have changed. And it's in the back where you can't see it anyway. But we did do the pond out in the front, which is right across from Reeves. And it's been there now, I don't know, ten years, eleven years. I'm not even sure. It's been a while. It goes by faster than you, you can remember. But it's not fenced and it's relatively deep, I think in the middle, probably eight feet or ten feet, something like that. And then I started thinking about other things in town like Reservoir Park, which is right here around the corner from us where you've got the pond and the beach and so forth, and, and it's not fenced. We've got the Scannick River Linear Park, which is here in town where there's a lot of access points and trails that run along the river. And certainly it can't fence the Scannick River. We've got Broadbrook Mill Pond right in the center of town, which has access for the residents and anybody else who might want to go in and look at the water and fish and so forth, and it's not fenced. So in thinking about this, it, it seems to me that it's really not necessary, although certainly if you want it, we could do it. It does have a permanent pool that's four feet deep out in the center. The edges are not that deep. And what will actually happen here? As the thing develops, is you're going to end up with a vegetated bumber around the edge of the pond, probably cattails. Because where the shallower water is, is where that stuff is going to grow. It acts kind of like an aquatic bench, if you will, where you're going to get some vegetation. The four-foot deep section will not support that kind of vegetation. The water's too deep. Cattails won't grow there. That'll stay open, and that's really the reason for the permanent pool in terms of water quality. So I just thought I would mention that. Again, the developer is certainly willing to put the fence up if you think it's necessary. The other thing that I did want to point out is that adjacent to this pond is, there's retaining walls that run along the backside of what is now building B. We did change the, the circulation, which made a lot of sense. So behind building B, there's a retaining wall here. And there's a retaining wall again along the side of the parking lot here, just to the solid building B. And those do have fences on them because they're, they've got some elevation to them. So those are fenced. There would be a chain link fence along both of these. And if need be, there could be a section of fence that came off of this and maybe went over the property corner here and another section of fence that could go over this property corner, which would more or less not be directly around the basin, but would cause a barrier for anybody that wanted to go down the hill and get to the pa, the basin itself. So just something to think about in moving forward. And, and again, as I said, the developer has no issue with, with adding the fence around this. So with that said, I'm going to have Dana Steele come up and talk to you about some of the changes based on your comments at the last meeting.
Thanks, Jay. Hi, everybody. Dana Steele, professional engineer with JR Russo and Associates. And I have made revisions to the plan to address staff comments, to address your comments. And to make some improvements to the plan that we identified through the course of making these revisions. So I'd like to run through those with you. One thing I'll just add to what Jay said about, he mentioned about the, the vegetation around, around the basin. I think one of the things that we had discussed before is that that the vegetation there is going to make it difficult for anyone to, to wade out into the deeper portions of, of the water, because it's going to sort of act like a, like a, a, a natural fence. And in, in general, part, part of our objection is to, to, to the fencing is, is aesthetics. These basins are natural looking. They're, they have kind of, they, they fit in with the, the, the natural landscape, but if put a fence around it, it's going to, it's going to look more in, in industrial. So that's our, that's our preference, but you'll, you'll make a decision whenever you feel is, is appropriate, and so we'll respect that. So moving on, the plans changes start on page five of the plan set. Ruth, I don't know if you want to move to page five. That's our layout and we, the majority of marketing, it's five and six. We have, as Jay mentioned, changed the lettering of the buildings instead of now that our, our, our sequence of construction goes from building A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and so forth. So we thought that, that made logical sense to make that change, so we, we did that. We've added subphasing to the plan as staff requested. So no longer do we have just a phase one and a phase two. We now have a phase one A, phase one B, phase one C, and as you can imagine, those correspond with the building levels. So we'll be starting with building A, the clubhouse, and the, the mailroom and the, and the boulevard entrance up, up to the roundabout. That's all part of phase one, including the Village Green area, the pool, the, the, the clubhouse. So in our phasing description, that's all spelled out. So I think staff has also included a specific condition in their approval motion that, that requires the clubhouse to be completed before occupancy of building A. So, so we understand that, and that is the, the expectation. We also added to this plan a temporary dumpster location. So if you look at building A, just to the south of building A is an enclosure area for, for the, the temporary dumpsters. Once they start on building two and buil, when buildings, building B, I should say, when building B is ready for occupancy, that dumpster will go away and this, and, and this next dumpster will be located further to the back. Then when building C gets done, it'll again be moved to a third location. And finally, when we get to building D, we'll have, we'll be able to install the permanent dump, trash enclosure building. So that'll mean for building D, E, and F, the last three buildings will have the, have access to the permanent structure. And also regarding phase two, the urgency access out to the rear will be constructed as part of, of phase one B. So when, when the first building is occupied, there will not be an emergency access drive because we have, it's close to the road. We have a roundabout for, for, for access. And, but when we get to, to the, to building two, building B, there will be a connection to the back. We also took a, a good suggestion that came up during the meeting to relocate our construction access to our eastern curb cut. So on our erosion control plan, it's not shown on this plan, but on the erosion control plan, it shows a construction access separate from the main driveway, which makes a lot of sense because that way, as residents are using building A, they're not conflicting with construction traffic. So I think that's a, a, a good change to the plan and good improvement. One of the things that we also did as we looked at access to the site, we re, rethought our second curb cut. Originally, we showed a right in and a right out. But as we thought about that more, we said, we thought, who's going to use this right in? You've got a right into the main, main driveway. And we just simplify things to only have it be a right and not, and what that allowed us to do is narrow the width of the driveway a little bit because it's only one way. It just, it just seemed to work better. So that wasn't something we discussed. It was something that came up as, as, as we were making these changes and we decided to, to make that change. I think it's, it's, it's less intensive, so we haven't, we haven't increased the scale or intensity of this project by this change. We've actually downsized it by eliminating a, a, a turning movement. So we think that that is an appropriate change. We've also added traffic signage to, to, to the plan, which DOT is going to require, but we've included on the plan now noting where, where the, to designate the, the turning lane out on Bridge Street. And we've also added stop signs along the boulevard entrance. So all of the driveways that connect perpendicularly into the boulevard entrance will have stop control. There'll be a stop, stop sign and a stop bar before they venture out into the, the boulevard portion of, of the access. The, we also, at the architect's suggestion, widened the sidewalk on the east side of the commercial building. It was a five-foot walk. We increased it to a six-foot walk. And I know there was some discussion about whether it was enough room in that walk for, for deliveries being made accessing, and we thought with the doors opening a little, a little more width would, would, would be a good thing. So, so we increased that to six feet. Overall, there's really no change in impervious coverage from the site. We've, we've, we've increased the walk, we decreased the, the, the drive, the, the drive-through, we cut out the right turn in. So overall, there's no increase in impervious coverage from, from our previous plan. We also reduced the, the radius going out of, of, of the main driveway. We had a sixty-foot radius. We have a sixty-foot radius coming into the main driveway. And we had a sixty-foot radius going out for tractor trailers to be able to turn right out of the main driveway. But as we thought more about our layout, we realized the trucks aren't going to do that. They're, they're going to come in either from the east and turn left into the site, or they're going to come from the west and turn right into the site. They're going to maneuver around the site and then out, making a right turn. We talked about, I said I'd provide a truck turning template to, to demonstrate this, which I, which I've done. It should be in your packet. It's online. I've blown it up here so that it's easier to see. You see the trucks would wait in the left turn lane for a clearing, and then they would turn in, and they've got room to, to make that turn. I've modified this, this island, these two islands here, so this truck can make the turn around there. And it comes around, I also widen the pavement here a little bit so that the truck can make that turn. And then, and then back out to, to, to Bridge Street. So the, the driveway is, is twenty feet wide. And, and it includes a mountable curbed concrete area so that the truck can, can drive up over it. But it limits, it directs the traffic to go in the one direction and discourages any people, anyone trying to take a shortcut and sneak in, in, in that way. The signage marking it indicating not, not to do that, and it's really not going to look like an appealing way, way to enter the site. And the reality is, once someone does it once illegally, they're going to realize that it didn't save them anything anyway. There's really no incentive for it. So, so we think that that's appropriate. So we, we've reduced this radius to only a forty-foot radius. So narrowed the curb cut a little bit and a, and the ox trucks can, can still make on there. Fire trucks can make a turn out of there. So we think that'll, uh, work well. The pedestrian access to the site, we, we modified slightly. Originally, we had a sidewalk running along the curb line coming around into this crosswalk here at the commercial space. And our traffic engineer suggested making it more of a direct path here. So from our, our walkout at the street, walking directly to the commercial space. So we made that change as well. Staff had also asked us to provide some short-term parking for deliveries to the residential buildings. So we designated one space in front of the, the main entrance for each of the residential buil, building as fifteen-minute parking. The idea is like, like DoorDash and some, and those kind of things could, could, could come in and use that space. And, and so we've, we've shown that on sheets five and six of, of the plans. The emergency access in, in the back, we've also modified slightly. We've increased the, the, the size of the easement area to address concerns about snow storage. And we have designated a path for pedestrians if they walk down this road to, to walk around the gate. So they don't have to go climb over or under the gate. They can just walk around it. But it's, but it's not intended for, for vehicles. So this, the, the gates like this are typically locked with a key, and the fire department has access to it. This is, this is not a, a, a maintenance access, so it's not for the, 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 the staff to use. It's, it's, it's only for the, for, for the emergency services to, to, to use it. But if pedestrians want to, want to go that way, there's a pathway for them to do that. The and, and we've also shown snow stockpile areas on, on, on the plan. Pages five and six include numerous stockpile areas, these, these lawn areas in, in the perimeter of the, the pavement over here, near the commercial site, in this corner, back here near the, the detention basin and the, and between the garbage trash building and building E. And, and also on the areas behind buildings B, C, and D. So, so we've added those to the plan. A couple of grading changes that we've made, sheets seven and eight. We've, we've pulled back the grading along this property owner here. And provided more, more buffer separation. That was to address town engineer's comment. Also eliminating all the grading here to the north of, of detention basin one. So that, that, that area now, there's no grading in close proximity to the property lines. So there should be no issue with constructing without encroaching over the property lines. The other change, grading change we, we made is we, we raised the height of the berm around detention basin one. That was, the town engineer was concerned about the height of, of the berm, so we raised it six inches. And to avoid encroaching closer to the, the residents to the, to the west, we shifted the basin slightly to the northeast. So by shifting it over, we raise it up without, without changing the footprint, and so to speak, of the, of, of the area of disturbance. So we're, we're keeping within our same limits of disturbance and just providing the, the the, the volume and the, and the safety factor that the town engineer was, was looking for. We have received a subsequent memo from the town engineer indicating that he was satisfied with our changes. The utility plan only changed was WPCA wanted all of our sewer laterals to be eight-inch minimum diameter, so we've changed that. They're now all eight-inch diameter. That's sheets twelve and thirteen. Our lighting plan, just minor change out near the, the, because our, the geometry of our second curb cut changed slightly, we had to move a, a light pole. But it was, you know, we moved it a few, few feet, so it didn't make, make any significant difference. We, we also updated our erosion control plans to address the town engineer's comments. We've incorporated the things that he's asked us to incorporate. We've updated our erosion control notes on sheet eighteen, specifically with regard to phasing. We've updated our erosion control notes on sheet 18, specifically regard to phasing. And one of the items on the revised plans that we wanted to clarify, and we had a discussion with staff, staff agreed. And it's reflected in the, the, the latest approval motion that clarifies when this, we talked about a three-year period that, that the commercial building, not only can we not start construction of the commercial building, or do we have to start it before we complete building F, which is the residential building? But there was also a, a time restriction that we had to start it within three years. So if this takes longer than three years, we're not waiting longer for the commercial. So that, and, but the, what, what needed clarification was when does that three years start? And after discussing with staff, we agreed that it made sense that once people are living here, you have your first occupancy, the three years start. So from, 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 from that point, three, three years, this, this will be completed. We'll have, we'll have a, a building, a building shell there to be built. So it'll, it'll, it'll be a, you'll have the, the commercial building in, in, in place at that point. Couple of changes to the details as well that have addressed town engineer's comments. And then finally, just plant changes to the landscape plan. A couple of things that I'll, I'll have Dom go through the, the landscape plan changes. Cause we got some feedback, staff got some feedback after the meeting with regard to plant selections. And they've taken that into consideration and, and so Dom can talk about that. But a, a couple of things to, to, to mention that were that, that we, that we missed. One was, we talked about bike racks and I, I admit, I forgot. I forgot to put the bike racks on the plan when I submitted it. It was an easy thing to do, I could have put it on, but I forgot. So I'm asking that you would, if you would make that a condition of approval. Staff has already incorporated it into the, into the motion. The other thing was, we had talked about shade trees around the dog park and, and our landscape architect forgot that one too. So, so we have two things that we intended to do, but, but neglected to include in the last revision. We'd asked that that be a condition of approval as well. Staff has already accounted for that. And I think staff also mentioned in our, when, when we met with them, they'd like to see crosswalks, painted crosswalks across the entrances of our, of our driveways. And that was something we agreed made sense to do. It'll, it'll help to let drivers entering the site and leaving the site realize, oh, this is where pedestrians walk. It's a good visual to have painted stripes across, across the driveway. So that would be, that's another condition of approval that, that was not on our revised plans. But it was discussed after we had submitted our plan. So Dom, you want to go through the changes to the landscape plan?
Sure. Can everybody hear me okay?
Very well.
Perfect. For the record, Dominic Sultreto BL Companies, 100 Constitution Plaza Hartford. Yeah, we got a mirror and, and again, I'll, I'll start off by saying apologies for missing the dog park trees. It was caught and obviously was, it wasn't something we overlooked on purpose. So we, we wanted to make sure we add, add back some shade for our four-legged friends back in that area. So two to three trees will be going back to the dog park area as a condition if, if, if the, if the commission so, so approves. What we ended up doing is we did get some comments and, and, and they all were pretty decent comments. So we, we, we took some incorporated steps. The one area that we started with, and I don't really have a graphic, but I can pull up the revised plan to show you if I can share a screen. Hold on one second. Where is my screen? Bear with me. There it is. Okay. I think I'm sharing a screen right now. Can you guys see the screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So in the green area, which is that, that town green type area that's behind the clubhouse, there was a comment about kind of opening up that area, making it a little more, obviously in the mixture of shade trees. So we went ahead and substituted shade trees in that area. We also got rid of the service berries, which was a comment, and we replaced them with some eastern red buds. We adjusted those greens, obviously to provide more shading, both over the driveway parking areas, but also in those extended or massive lawn areas that kind of sit out there. We also, we also put a, a source skin densis, which is eastern red bud in front. We thought that would be a lot more showy than, than the tree that we had in there previously. The other comments that we made, more or less are on the list and they, and they come out, they, pardon me. They come into more of the diversity and longevity for some of the planting. So we had Anabell hydrangeas, we took the recommendation for the oak leaf hydrangea to be more hardy on the site. And obviously talks with, some of these have to do with pollinator and then having some of the, some of the cultivars in there that are sterile. So we got rid of the endless summer hydrangeas and we went to a little, a little quick pinnacle, our pinnacle hydrangeas. There was a comment about black, black arborvitae, I thoroughly agreed with that. Where that was used was over to the dumpster area. So we went with El Nelly Stevens Holly. Let me show you that for a second. So it kind of encapsulates that, that, that area over near the, the dumpsters. So it's a little more robust. And there was a question about your, your vast population of whitetail deer in the area. So that would be a little less of a, of a buffet for them as well. There was a comment made about the, the lily turf. So we switched lily turf on site and that's, that occurs in a bunch of the different plant bed areas. We went with Siberian cypress. And then the cat meat, cat mint species, which I didn't have a problem with the one that we did propose. But we have other cat mint species that we can do. The question on that was just to fall over as, as the actual vegetation kicks out. So we went to a different variety on that one as well. So we went to cats meow cat mint, which is, for those of you who don't know, cat mint is basically catnip at that point. And then we diversified the mix. We got the comment about having just daylilies and we went with two different style daylilies, which is going to get us a visual color barrier. Two of the ones that we're choosing are, are long-lived, so they can be spring, summer, fall. And then we did take the advice of the, the person that made the comment. We did intersperse some ornamental grass into those beds as well. So we brought in the, the Hamlin fountain grass to be bossed with those two other items in those areas. And those are just areas for color splash. And that concluded the landscape changes that were made to the plans themselves. Most of them, like I said, were more of subbing in some different varieties that may be more hardier or in the, in the, in the microclimate that you have in the area.
That concludes our presentation. Our traffic engineer is here, our architect is also here to answer any questions you have.
Well, I'll start down there with you, Stacy. Do you have any questions?
I think I'm still a little bit interested in that fencing. It will go on that retaining wall. I do think that like the black chain link on the retaining wall would also be a nice addition to the plan to
extend it.
To kind of shield that downhill slope of about 10 feet real quick, right? And then the pond. That's a comment.
I guess I'll throw my thought in, I was going to ask, probably Dominic will answer the best. So I'm around that detention pond, you're going with a a conserv- conservation seed mix, is that correct?
Yeah, very thick myself off you. That's correct. Yep.
And to what height does that grow naturally?
If left to its own devices, it's probably going to get, I mean, some of these, I'm looking through the, the list of them right now. You got little blue spam on there, the rise not going to get high, the tree foil, butterfly milkweed, you got sneeze weed, you got goldenrod. So you're going to get two to three feet out of that when it starts to go in. I mean, the black eyed Susans are going to probably come in the first year. And then there's a dominant effect that happens, they start to kind of push off after a little while. So on a good day, you'll have two to three feet and that's conservative, it could get taller than that.
That's going to be left natural, correct? There's not going to be any mowing in that area.
Our, we provided an O and M plan. The O and M plan did call for mowing because typically the 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 maintenance for these bases, what, what's recommended is, is by, by keeping it high though, mowing it high, like the recommendation is five, no, no less than five inches.
That's in the basin itself.
It's to discourage waterfall.
What I was, what I was trying to get towards is the, the land that goes between the building and the actual basin itself. That's got that conservation mix.
Yeah.
Slow, and if it's left to grow at, at a three to five feet height, I would think that would kind of discourage people from wanting to walk back there. Cause now we're talking just higher, higher that, that might keep people from wandering off there if it is grown up to that kind of a height.
It's just also quite a slope, isn't it? Am I, am I judging it wrong?
Be to one slope.
Three feet horizontal, one foot vertical.
Does that help at all, Stacy?
I think it, it helps that it's just going to shield it as like a, a attractive nuisance. But I think that the fact that it slopes could be misleading with those growing as well. And people might just always, I mean, could you possibly like happen there and like tumble down that hill accidentally, not realizing that you've got grade with that growth? Just curious what you think about experience.
And you're going to see that the, the slope, it's not like it's a, it's flat and then it's like just drops off and you can't, you can't see it's
You're going to see that it gradually tapers with the, right? Just a suggestion. Can I ask a question? Fencing on the retain, on the retaining wall.
Yes.
That's what I was saying, I was
We're willing to extend that fencing to the property lines if that would help.
I like that.
And so then somebody would have to do a deliberate end around kind of deal to
Going to look for it.
I think that kind of would satisfy the, the wandering person. Okay. Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Dave?
I guess I kind of go on to the O and M side of this a little bit. Where are you guys going to keep the chemical storage specifically? You have a comment about chemical storage stored. But where is it going to be stored?
Allowed to store chemicals on, on, on the site. The limited things like de-icing materials in small quantities can be kept inside the building.
Or it says hazardous chemicals, including automobile fluids, pesticides, paints, solvents, et cetera, shall be stored undercover within the building. So I'm trying to find out which building and where in the building.
Yeah, that's, that's
That's your words.
We can, we, we can remove that.
Okay. Then my other question was C spill for spill prevention and response. You mentioned the spill containment systems. Where are they going to be stored? The outside so people can get to them quickly, corners of the buildings? Speedy dry, somebody does have a spill of diesel fuel, of gasoline, of something. How do they get to this?
I mean, those things could be kept in the clubhouse.
So you've got to, so if you're in the parking lot and you have a spill by building A, you've got to run all the way over to the clubhouse.
Yeah.
You see where I'm going with this, I'm just trying to make it so they can get to it if they need it.
Yeah. I mean, we're talking about like, like a, a leaky oil in a, in an auto pit, right?
Don't know, don't, don't know. You could have a diesel truck that pops into something, his gas tank falls off.
Well, it would fall on, on, on the maintenance company to, to identify those things and clean them up. I wouldn't expect a residence to go, you know, go to the clubhouse, find it. If there are conscientious, they, they might, but I think that's, I think it's more of a, of a maintenance responsibility for the
Okay. Okay. There's going to be full-time maintenance staff on, on site?
Should be. Yes.
Where are they going to pretend them on site? Where are they going to be housed? Where's their office? As you know, mention of, of
There is office space in the
Space in the clubhouse there.
Okay. So we've got a place they can go and they can store their stuff and that.
And I imagine there'll probably be some pool chemicals at the clubhouse as well.
Yeah, there's usually room for a chlorine and all that stuff, usually banks. And usually have a couple of maintenance guys, golf carts going around.
As a comparison, some of the projects we've worked on, all the family projects, the mansions is one. She does have a clubhouse, but has some full-time staff that's there every day. Probably like eight to five. I mean, they don't live there, but the staff there every day. Another one we did in that field, which is a little larger, again clubhouse, full-time staff, maintenance building with full-time staff, as well as the mansions has a maintenance building with a full-time staff. And, and they're comparable in size. I think the mansions is 240, the one in that is 340. So we're in that general range where it's on the sides that you really need people there full-time to take care of the maintenance and
Oh, definitely. I just wondered where it was exactly. I, I agree. It should be
Clubhouse, there is office space in there.
Okay.
And there would be staff.
Okay. Those are the places I had seen. You guys had a lot of it in the last meeting, but I wasn't here. That's quite thorough.
And you have any questions?
I want to follow up on a question Stacy had asked you last time and I didn't hear what you were thinking. And that's the security for the packages as they come in, like at Christmas and there's too much mail for, to put it in a locked drop box where people get a key in their mailbox and the concept of security for the residents to keep wandering people out. The police had also been interested in it. That somebody who comes off the highway looking to break into cars or whatever. Okay, about
It's not, the site's not a prison, we're not, you know, you know, preventing people from, from coming in. It's a, it's a pedestrian friendly, so people can walk in.
Can they get into the buildings or you need a key to get into the building? And were you thinking about, okay, and were you thinking about cameras on the parking lots or?
That's something that will be up to the owner at the time. I think really it comes down to after running it for a certain amount of
If there's problems.
Problems, that's put up cameras. If there are any problems, they're probably not going to put up cameras. And I don't think that, you know, there's really no answer to that until you've got a little bit of a track record to see how, how it pans out. But the buildings are unlocked, they're generally
You have to be a resident to get inside the buildings.
Exactly. It's a, it's typically a car, a key poke by a car, the chap just like to get it.
Okay, thank you.
Wayne, do you have anything?
I just think security cameras would be a good selling point for the, for the people coming in there. It is, it is an area of noted hot crime, you know, next to the highway. There've been many attempts of robbery from the local banks down the road. I just think it would be a good, less than the gentleman said, yeah, that would be a nice idea.
And the, and the mailbox building, yes, I, I said, that's a good idea to don't want to create a problem, cause a problem if there isn't any, you know, and if, if people are coming, want to live there, whoa. You know, they see security right away when it's not needed. It's, it's not a good thing. This is not going to be cheap places. Okay. So if it's needed, we respond to it. It's hard to do it at the beginning, especially when you hope they don't need it. But I agree with you on the mailbox building.
I've just had concerns about that crosswalk, but I think when you talk to the state, they're going to look at that in a more depth. Crosswalk being the lights blinking and stuff.
Yeah, that'll have to be approved by DOT.
Right. That's all I know.
So above the cameras, the police department's a half mile down the road, they go by there 85 times a day. So I don't, cameras, I don't, like I said, as, as needed. Most places we do work at, they have cameras either at the mailbox or at the office, that's about it. As far as my comment last time about Lenny's comments, I did not see an official paper from Lenny.
He did, he did. Yeah, he's, he's satisfied.
I trust you, already signed off on that. I am good with that. And then any, I know this process moves slow, any word on the easement from across the street?
It's an interesting thing and I'm probably talking more than I should. When I was doing the project in 2008, I had met with DCF across the street and they said, you know, to get permission, because all I was doing was moving the sidewalk, maybe a few feet of their land, putting even the fence. Had no problem and lows couldn't come. And I, I got back on it now. My attorney Coleman Levy is dealing with DCF and with DOT, along with Dana and Jay. Yes, it will happen. I can't tell you what's going to be this week and next Yes, it will happen, I can't tell you when it's going to be this week, next week or in a month, but yes.
So that whole kind of holds up everything on you guys? You don't get that easy.
The state before you can do it.
Yeah. Unfortunately.
It's important.
It's wow, you gotta have it. Uh, I have no other questions, you guys did a thorough presentation and you answered our questions and I'm I'm satisfied.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think you did an excellent job in addressing the things that we had from the last meeting. Um, I, there were some concerns or comments previously talking about the blue ditch and. You know, added flow and all that stuff and I guess the probably the best way that that. I think that could be easily, you know, evaluated is. From your your normal, you're saying you can keep normally about four feet of water in there. I mean, and then again, if we go two weeks without rain, that may even actually drop lower. So but let's let's pick at the four foot number. How much total rainfall would we need before you reach that? That discharge pipe and actually start discharging out of those, you know, are we talking a two inch rainfall or three inch rainfall?
Water starts leaving.
Before it starts, yeah, till it hits that discharge pipe.
Well, the the um, the discharge pipe is is what lets the water out, so so during.
But it's not set at the four foot level, right? It's set up higher, higher. Um, I guess I can look at the elevations and according to this.
It's at the four foot level.
It said at the four foot level, that was going to be the determining factor to keep it at four foot?
The that, it's a weir, it's a it's a V shape of a weir and and so when the water drops to the bottom of that weir, then then there's no, then that's that's the. The permanent pool elevation.
Okay.
Unless it evaporates and then it drops lower.
Gotcha, okay. So if it's if it's maintaining at the four foot, then. Pretty much it's. Then you're telling me that you're, it's gonna, it's gonna. Exceed the the discharge and and that will throttle down the amount of water that's flowing out of it or?
Picture like a V, right? So so when when the water first starts coming out, there's very little that can get out during that, the the bottom of the V, right? And as the water rises.
Then it opens it up some more.
wider and it lets more out, so so during during smaller storms, there's very little water leaving, it's it's trickling out very slowly. And then if if they get more storm, more water, then it goes goes out faster. As I explained in in last last time, we're we're significantly reducing the those peak flows, so. You have seventy-five percent reduction in the in the smaller storms and fifty percent reduction of the of the of the larger storms, so. It's going to be an improvement in terms of the discharge to the blue ditch.
Okay, I I was just hoping there'd be a a number that people could easily correlate with saying that, okay, we're gonna need two inches of wa- of a rainfall before. You know, we've reached maybe the hundred percent discharge point that we're putting in a significant discharge out of there.
Well, I mean, we've we've analyzed it for um, for the the two year storm, which is, which is about three inches of rainfall to the hundred year storm, which is eight inches of rainfall. So it's in in.
Yeah, I mean.
In between.
Okay. Uh, the only other thing I was going to, I guess maybe more of a suggestion is looking at the drawings that don't look like you're planning on putting any water over at the dog park. It might be a.
Not show any water though.
Might be a thing that the residents, like they go to walk their dogs over there to give them some fresh water. If the. Minor. Okay. Just, you know, as a as a dog owner, that's what you do, you take them for a walk and then give them a drink, I carry water with me, give them water.
That's why not, yes.
That was, that was all that I had. Andy, you have any other? Questions for the applicant there?
Thing I just wanted to ask. I believe I know the answer, but I figured I'd ask and have you answer it. The emergency access that you said will be, that will go in. Will it be gated at that time? Yes, I just want to clarify that that is not a construction entryway, I think there's some angst on Spring Street that. I haven't.
It's not construction, so it will not be used for. And it will be dated.
And it will be locked with a key, not a not a not a not a key, not a not a key card access or keypad or anything like that.
I just wanted to put that out there. Okay.
So this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that'd like to ask, make a comment on this application? Mr. Anderson?
Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street. Um. Yeah, I think on the practical side, there's going to be traffic issues and all the statistics in the world are not going to change that. However, that doesn't mean this project shouldn't happen. But we're going to get a lot more traffic on Bridge Street. I know, I travel it a lot and there's always traffic on Bridge Street. So there'll be more. You can come up with all the statistics you want. On traffic, but. There's going to be a lot more cars than you think, there are going to be people complaining, there's not enough parking. But I don't know, that'll be your problem, not ours. But uh. We know there's going to be a traffic impact, but you know what? That's life today, everybody uses a car.
Anyone else? Is there anyone online that would like to comment on this application?
Can I?
Certainly.
For the record, we did receive an email today. From a Lori Crowdy. She lived on Spring Street. And it was sent out to all the commissioners, the applicant. We had several. Items that she brought up, which I think were discussed here today, traffic, security, the emergency access, or that's where my question kind of came from. Um. The foot traffic. Coming in and just that goes with the security, blue ditch, the construction of that culvert. Uh, you mentioned that the road would block. Cut off to the folks at the far end. Um. And then just a note about preserving East Windsor's character. So, uh. And then in her her comments, she had like linked to a short little video to give folks a view of Spring Street, what that looks like. I just want to get that on the record.
Okay, and it is added to the website as part of the.
Yes.
Okay, that's. Does anyone on the commission have anything further they'd like to ask? Hmm. Now I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing on application PZ. Twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, the applicant is NRT Realty LLC. Um. For a. Site plan review. And special use permit in accordance with section eight one seven point four. Of the zoning regulations.
We have a motion to close the public hearing, do we have a second?
Second.
By Dave, any further discussion? Right now, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. Okay, is. Everybody have all the information they need to vote on this application?
I asked for a little clarification, there were a few things we talked about.
Right?
That I'm wondering if they need to go into conditions which must be met prior to the milars or. Um. How they will be handled and the things. That I think. We talked about that trigger a little bit of changes was the fence being continued. But the. It's on the plans from nobody falling over the slope. Um, the O and M plan with respect to chemical storage needed, I think, an edit to strike. Chemicals that aren't going to be there. And I don't think we need to deal with it, but you raised water at the dog park. And that one seemed too small to me to be a condition, but that's up to you.
That's that's entirely up to the applicant, I think, if they want to, you know, make it as a as a nice amenity, but it's not something that's truly in our purview, I I made it as a suggestion, it's not a. Not a condition.
Right. So that made me wonder if the fence and the O and M plan. Edit need to be addressed in here. So where we make a motion consistent.
That would be for under section four E and F.
Is that what you want to do Ruth Ann?
Yep, I can put them in there.
Add a E that says something about the fence.
Fence to be extended, chaining false.
Okay.
Yeah.
Your training.
I call them wing walls when I'm talking about, they just come out and like it.
Yeah, extended is good because you can work with the applicant on what that means. And then what about the O and M chemical storage? Do you need an F to deal with that or? Is that?
Simply to.
Yeah, we can put it.
Just up update revise in the O and M.
Yeah. I'm just going to say revise to address chemical storage. These have to come out, maybe a notation to the clubhouse.
Questions?
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I don't think that's all, that's all. Pretty reasonable.
Nobody has anything else, I'll entertain a motion on this application.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve application PZ twenty twenty-five dash nineteen. The applicant is NRT Realty LLC, owners estate of Joseph. Latta Junior, Deborah A Morell. And Adam Vaughn. For a special use permit site plan review in accordance with section eight one seven point four. Of the East Windsor zoning regulations for a mixed use multifamily and commercial development. Located at the following addresses. One thirteen, one twenty-five, one twenty-seven, one thirty-one. One thirty-three Bridge Street, map one eleven, block twelve. Lots four, eight, nine, ten and eleven. The zone is um, PCD. The approval is granted subject to conformance with the reference plans and support documents. As may be modified by the commission in this approval. And the conditions and modifications, the plan set is in. The draft motion presented by the town planner. To the commission. And. It contains. Two findings, the commission finds the application to be complete and that all information necessary to act on the application has been submitted. Two, the detailed. Development plan is in general conformance with the approved master development plan. There are twenty conditions. On condition four in this. Um, document, we are adding an E that will state the fence on the retaining wall is to be extended. And a new F under four that will say revise the O and M plan for chemical storage. And the remaining conditions. Five through twenty are included in the motion.
We have a motion to approve this application, do we have a second?
Second.
By Dave, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You have your approval.
Thank you, Professor. Good luck.
Look forward to seeing your project.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Good luck. I like the presentation.
Like recycling all.
It's a sign. That was like. That's.
Okay.
Okay, um. At this point. Going on to our new public hearings. Um, I would suggest that we take these out of order. That will take uh. Easy twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one for the sign regulation, we'll take that. Third and we'll proceed in the order of twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-one. Uh, if you're all in agreement, I'll entertain a motion to take the public hearings out of order.
I'll make a motion to take the public hearing on. On the new public hearing on application twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one after. The other two applications.
Motion to take our. Public hearings out of order, do we have a second?
Okay.
By Dave, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 We shall proceed then. The republic carrying PZ twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three, the applicant owner is. James Garino is requesting a re-subdivision, one rear lot located at forty Barber Hill Road. Map nineteen, block forty-eight, lot thirteen dash thirteen, zone A one. He's here to speak on behalf of this application.
Evening, for the record, my name is TJ Baresi. I'm a licensed engineer and a surveyor, I'm the principal owner of Baresi Associates. Office located on Paquannic Avenue Windsor. Tonight representing James Giorgio regarding an application for a re-subdivision to create one additional lot. Re-subdivision includes a rear lot by definition requiring a special use permit. Properties known as forty Barber Hill Road contains six point zero seven seven acres in the A one residential zone. Located on the westerly side of Barber Hill Road, about a quarter mile north of Griffin Road. Property is the home of the applicant, James Giorgio. He has a single family home on the property which is accessed off Barber Hill Road. It's served by public water and septic system. Subdivision will take place in the front southeast corner of the property, the area of the proposed lot is fifty thousand square feet. If you want to switch to the grading plan sheet number three, I think, thanks. Uh, the property gently slopes away from Barber Hill Road. Eventually drops off to an inland wetland pocket. There is an existing swale along the shoulder of Barber Hill Road running from south to north. Area of the re-subdivision is fully vegetated with open woods and little understory. As I said, the applicant is seeking is seeking to re-subdivide to create one new residential lot. The existing home will remain as forty Barber Hill Road. And the existing home will become a real lot by definition. The proposed lot will be a frontage lot right along Barber Hill Road, both lots meet the zoning regulations. Number forty will have four point nine two nine acres and the new proposal will be fifty thousand square feet, which is one point one four eight acres. Both lots have the required buildable area, required building setback lines. I'll be prepared a grading plan to show conceptual home driveway shed utilities, things like that. The new lot will be accessed by driveway directly off Barber Hill Road. Existing rear lot already has an eighteen foot wide passable driveway uh, per the regulation for real lots. Both lots will be served by public water and anti-septic. Septic system for the proposed lot has been designed based on deep test, perk tests and groundwater monitoring. Plans are submitted and approved by North Central. We are proposing a cross culvert uh, for the new driveway to maintain the existing swale along Barber Hill Road. Those drainage calculations were submitted to the town engineer. For the culvert design, we're keeping tree removal to to a minimum. Uh, the existing wetland pocket between the front lot and the rear lot will create a natural screening of the rear lot in excess of a hundred feet. Showing erosion controls throughout, sil fence, construction entrance, things of that nature. Also notes on the plan stating all erosion controls shall remain in place until all disturbed areas are stabilized with a lawn. Applicant is requesting waivers for sidewalks and pathways, streetlights, and he's requesting a proposing a fee in lieu of open space. Regarding staff memos, we received wetland agent sign off. Uh, WPCA, this is not a sewer service area, falls under the North Central. Uh, WPCA, this is not a sewer service area, falls under the North Central jurisdiction. Connecticut Water have provided a capacity available. North Central has approved the soils for onsite, uh, septic. Town engineer, I believe the town engineer signed off on everything as well. Uh, the town planner is requesting just a couple of notes assuring the rear lot maintains a vegetative screening, which we will add, uh, to, to the final plans.
I'm listening, Jim, you have any questions for him?
Yeah, so basically the front lot right now, it's all woods. And you'll basically, you'll, you'll leave the screening on the side, going to driveway, to the front, to the back. The house in there. And you said North Central, you had a pool for.
Yes.
Two bedrooms, that, that's it? Two bedrooms?
The, the applicant's here is going to be a, a home for him. That's where he's going to live. That's all he wanted.
Doubt.
Okay, yeah, cool. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, again, we've been through a million of these. I got, I got nothing.
Wayne, you have any questions?
I do not.
I'm confused. There's two applications and it feels like one transaction.
There's a lot line adjustment that's happening in the back of the first plan set we received. I have the updated, it's not much different, but in order to make the frontage for the new lot here, um, there's a lot line adjustment. Land given to forty-two. And then, um, so fifty then coming in for a rear lot. So there's separate applications kind of be talked, they're being spoken about in Canada. This moment. Is, get found. Now, this will be Jim's house, right, here, but he needed to do the lot line sets and gave him sixty feet or so there. And then they're creating, proposing to create a rear lot, a vast here.
Now it's all, it's all free back there anyways.
So there are, anyway, two abutting rear lots.
You cancel limit.
Yep. And we looked around to make sure there weren't any, weren't any touching them and, um, so, yeah.
So all the, um, reviews and approved memos and health department approval will both be on public water. The new laws, um.
North Central signs off.
Yeah, that was going to be one of my questions.
Fifty, we have three bedrooms.
That, that was going to be one of my questions. The, the drawing set shows a proposed well.
Yeah, so the updated drawings have the water.
The total oversight on my part, I never, in my wildest dreams thought there'd be public water there, so never even thought to look.
I saw well.
So after I submit and the town engineer said, there's public water there, like.
Um, we were waiting on land sign, sign off for those drainage calculations and that, that came in this morning.
Okay.
We've started siding with clothing, all right.
Are you all set in?
Yeah, I just was confused by this. I like the same thing.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, I'm good.
Stacy.
I'm good.
Next, that was my, my only thing, uh, next to looking at the old plan set, I'm like, why you have a well, talking public water, so. I'm good there too. Any of any, they also you want to refine?
No.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to comment on this application? Is there anyone online that would like to comment on this application? Okay. Okay, um, I think it's very straightforward for us, so.
Yeah.
Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing? Do I have to read all the information for this?
Yes, please.
Okay, hold on a minute. Okay, all right. So, all right, I'll make a motion to close public hearing on application PZ twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three for a special use permit for rear lot at forty Barber Hill Road. The owner applicant is Jim Giorgio. Gio, okay.
I'll just from a mispronunciation.
They live down the road from you.
It skipped here. Yep, this application for re-subdivision proposes cutting a new frontage lot from forty Barber Hill Road. The originating lot has an existing single-family dwelling located to the rear of the lot. The subdivision will result in two conforming lots, one of which will be a rear lot.
You just, you just, you just need to give us the report here for the close of the public.
Okay. And then when you do need the next part here, don't pursue into any of this.
No, 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 that's, closing the public hearing is just. If you look at your agenda.
Yeah.
Yes.
Far too bad.
You have a motion to approve.
Yes.
Okay, if we have a motion to close the public hearing, do we have a second?
Seconds.
Can invite Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 You've closed the public hearing. Okay. Now, if no one else, does anybody have any further clarifications they need or?
Are we taking twenty-three and then twenty-four?
They are totally separate applications.
Yeah.
Hey, if not, I'll entertain a motion on this application.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve application PZ twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three for a special use permit for a rear lot at forty Barber Hill Road. The owner applicant is Jim Giorgio. Sorry if I said it wrong. Um, the application is for a re-subdivision, cutting new frontage lot from forty Barber Hill Road. The originating lot has an existing single-family dwelling located to the rear of the lot. The subdivision will result in two conforming lots, one of which will be a rear lot. A lot line adjustment is included in the plan set to render the front lot conforming.
I know where she's reading that.
Oh, summary.
Oh, 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 sorry.
Oh, but first we need to do a motion to waive the requirements of six, of section six point five, the streetlights for application PZ twenty-three for the two lots of re-subdivision and creation of a rear lot at forty Barber Hill Road, AKA assessors map nineteen, block sixty-eight, lot thirteen dash forty, zoned A one, owner applicant Jim Giorgio.
Okay, before we proceed to a second, just so everyone's clear, so there's, there's a request in this application to waive the streetlight requirements. Um, that's because there are no existing streetlights in the area, or there is already existing streetlight?
There's already, right?
There's already, so it doesn't require, even though it's a subdivision, our subdivision regs require.
So no new, no new rope, anything like that, yeah.
So that's what the streetlight waivers for. The sidewalks and the open space are included in the terms and conditions, so the fee in lieu ofs are already included in the
Second.
Exactly.
Terms of condition, so the only thing that we have to make a motion first is to waive with the streetlight.
Yeah.
Because it's already, uh, existing, so let me, let me revise this, so let's, I take a like a motion to waive the streetlight requirement.
I'll make a motion to waive the requirements of section six point five, streetlights for application PZ twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three for a two-lot re-subdivision and creation of a rear lot at forty Barber Hill Road.
Uh, okay, uh, we have a motion to waive the streetlight requirements. Do we have a second?
Second.
Come by Dave, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we have our waiver for streetlights. Now I'll take a motion on the application itself.
Make a motion to approve PZ twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three for a re-subdivision and special use permit for a rear lot at forty Barber Hill Road, which is assessors, assessors map nineteen, block sixty-eight, lot thirteen dash forty, zoned A one, owner applicant Jim Giorgio. The reference plans are included in the memo from the planning director revised nine twenty-three, twenty-five. Um, the findings are the proposed frontage and rear lot satisfy the requirements of section four oh one bulk area for the A one zone and section four oh eight rear lots and chapter seven special permits of the East Windsor zoning regulations. The applicant has elected to pay the fee in lieu of sidewalks in accordance with section six point three point five and a fee in lieu of open space per section seven point five of the East Windsor subdivision regulations. The conditions are numbered one through fourteen in this revised memo dated nine twenty-three, twenty-five.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, by Jim. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Ananems. Okay.
Yes, three, four.
No, we did not. Okay. She breathed.
Pretty much.
Next. Next public hearing.
Wait a second.
Yep.
We need to continue on and do the rear lot for fifty Barber Hill Road.
Next public hearing.
Doing now, that's another ticket. The whole narrative, so confusing, but, uh.
It is confusing.
We have a separate memo for that. We have. But application.
Got it.
New, new presentation.
Everything's in. Okay.
It was easy when the tight walk.
So our next public hearing is PZ twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four. The applicant owner is Mark and Laurel, Laurel Ackerman is requesting a re-subdivision, one rear lot located at fifty Barber Hill Road, map nineteen, block sixty-eight, lot thirteen dash forty-one, zoned in the A one. Who's here to speak on behalf of this application?
Evening. For the record, my name is TJ Baresi. I'm a licensed engineer and a surveyor. I am the principal owner of Baresi Associates. Our office is located on Paquannic Avenue, Windsor. And I representing Mark and Laurel Ackerman for an application for a re-subdivision to create one additional lot. Re-subdivision includes a rear lot by definition requiring a special use permit. Properties known as fifty Barber Hill Road contains twelve point two four five acres in the A one residential zone. Located on the westly side of Barber Hill Road, about a quarter mile north of Griffin Road. Property is the home of the applicant, Mark and Laurel Ackerman. They have a single-family home on the lot accessed off Barber Hill Road, served by public water and outside septic. Re-subdivision will take place in the back northwest corner of the property. Area of the proposed lot is one twenty-one, nine sixty-eight square feet or two point eight zero zero acres. This property slopes away from Barber Hill Road, then rises back up to the area of the re-subdivision. There is an existing swale along the shoulder of Barber Hill Road running from south to north. The area of the proposed lot is vegetated with a mix of brush and woods. The applicant is seeking to re-subdivide the property, create one new residential home lot. The existing home will remain as fifty Barber Hill Road. The existing home will remain a frontage lot along Barber Hill. The proposed lot will be a rear lot. Both lots meet the zoning regulations, number fifty, will have nine point four four five acres. And the new proposed rear lot, as I mentioned, will have one twenty-one, nine sixty-eight square feet or two point eight zero zero acres. Both lots have the required buildable areas and the required building setback lines. Here to grading plan showing a conceptual home driveway shedding utilities. The proposed lot will be accessed by driveway off Barber Hill Road. This rear lot driveway proposed will have an eighteen-foot wide passable access way per the regulations. Both lots will be served by public water and onsite septic systems. Septic system designed for the proposed lot was based on deep tests, perk tests, and groundwater monitoring. Plans are submitted and approved by North Central Health District. Showing a cross-clover proposed for the new driveway crossing to maintain the existing swale along Barber Hill Road. Drainage study was submitted, uh, for the culvert design to the town engineer. Tree removal is being kept to a minimum. We do have evergreen and deciduous trees, but proposed to be installed with shrubs for screening between the rear lot and the frontage lot. Those aren't shown on your plans, but an addendum was submitted to the town, uh, after those, these plans were printed out. We have erosion control shown throughout sill fence, construction entrance, temporary soil protection, things of that nature. We have notes on the plan stating all erosion controls remain in place until all disturbed areas are stabilized with lawn. Applicant is also requesting waivers for sidewalks and pathways, streetlights, and is proposing a fee in lieu of open space. Regarding staff memos, we have a wetland agent sign-off. Uh, WPCA, this is not a sewer service area, falls under the North Central jurisdiction. Connecticut Water has, uh, available capacity. North Central District has submitted an approval letter stating that the sewers, the onsite soils are suitable for onsite septic. Town engineer, I believe he has signed off on everything as well. And the town plan is requesting some notes to be added to assure the rear lot maintains a vegetative screening, which we will, will, we'll.
Start the other end. Stacy, you have, uh, any questions for the applicant?
Do not.
Dave?
No, sir, I'm good.
Yeah?
I'm good.
No question.
Oh, no.
Oh, boy. Okay. Uh, I mean, it's, looks pretty straightforward to me. You did say something in your presentation that you were requesting a, a waiver for sidewalks versus paying fee in lieu of.
I'm, that man misspoke, um. Normally sidewalks are waivers. E, East Windsor does it differently, correct?
Do a fee in lieu of.
Yeah, I, I guess. I think those, those notes on the cover sheet, I believe, the.
It's in the general conditions, number seven and eight.
Okay.
Open space and, uh, fee in lieu for sidewalks. Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
We're seeking a waiver on that. Okay, so this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to comment on this application? Is there anyone online that would like to comment on this application? There's no issues and I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on application PZ twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four. The applicant owner is Mark and Laurel Ackerman requesting a re-subdivision one rear lot located at fifty Barber Hill Road, map nineteen, block sixty-eight, lot thirteen dash forty-one, zoned A one.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Come by Dave, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ananems, public hearing is closed. Okay, so there is a motion to waive the streetlight requirement. Imagine it's for the same, similar, that there are existing streetlights and there's no need for additional streetlights. Anyone have any questions on this? Now I'll entertain a motion for the, uh, streetlight waiver.
Make a motion to waive the requirements of section six point five streetlights for application PZ twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four for a two-lot re-subdivision and creation of a rear lot at fifty Barber Hill Road. Assessors map nineteen, block sixty-eight, lot thirteen dash forty-one zoned A one, owner applicant Mark and Laurel Ackerman.
We have a motion to waive the streetlight requirement. Do we have a second?
Second.
Come by Dave, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Streetlights are waived. I'll now entertain a motion for the application itself.
I'll make a motion to approve PZ twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four for a two-lot re-subdivision and special use permit for a rear lot at fifty Barber Hill Road. for a two lot re-subdivision and special use permit for a rear lot at 50 Barber Hill Road. Assessors, map 19, block 68, lot 13-41, zoned A1. Owner applicant Mark and Laurel Ackerman. The reference plans are noted in the memo revised 92325 from staff. Finding that the proposed frontage and rear lots satisfy the requirements of Section 401 Bulk Area for the A1 Zone and Section 408 Rear Lots and Chapter 7 Special Permits of the East Windsor Zoning Regulation. The applicant has elected to pay the fee in lieu of sidewalks in accordance with Section 6.3.5 and a fee in lieu of open space per Section 7.5 of the East Windsor Subdivision Regulations. This approval includes 14 conditions, all noted in the memo from Ruth Ann Calabrese, Director of Planning and Development in the 92325 memo.
We have a motion to approve the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Given by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. You have your approval.
Thank you very much.
Find your plans back. The ones that got approved though. Wrong ones to be back. Thought I'd pay you some money.
You don't need them?
No.
All right, our next public hearing. PZ 2025-21. The applicant owner is East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission is requesting a text amendment to the East Windsor Zoning Regulation, Section 602, sign regulations. Who is going to present on this one?
Danielle Boudreaux, City Town Planner, Zoning Enforcement Official and Wetlands Agent for the town of East Windsor. Um, so to recap, we proposed these sign regulations um, that primarily included the changes that we had for these were to fix typos within the section, to fix inconsistencies within the section where it would say one thing and then say something different, you know, two lines down. And to remove per state statute, any reference to content within signage that's no longer allowed. So that, those were the, that was the main reason for making this proposal for a text amendment for sign. The only actual change, change we made is actually for the benefit of the businesses, which was to add A-frame signs. Um, they're widely used already around town, menu board specials, oil changes, et cetera. Uh, it also gives them now the fact that they can have four signs per business. Um, and it would cut down on violations if, or as of now, it's not allowed unless you have a temporary event, I mean, a temporary permit for a sign. So we figure, let's put that in there so people are able to have it. It's useful to them and they'll, you know, will avoid violations. We workshop this three times with you, PZ, the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, I made each of the changes that were suggested and we presented the official text amendment proposal at the last meeting. And we're here for the public hearing. If you want to go through every single one again, or?
Well, I think we've been through, I mean, if there's something in the public that wants clarification or uh, I, I would just also add that you, we also did, uh, remove some verbiage on residential signage.
Yes, yes, we did. We um, residential sign. We, it had said residential zones, but we used it to uses because there obviously are residential houses that are, you know, in B3 or whatever. Um, whereas residential signage is not very restricted. It's too.
It was, it was more to clarify.
Yeah, I just have to clean it up a little bit.
Okay. Are you, Jimmy, you have any questions on this? Wayne? Dave?
Nope.
Jason?
Do not.
Say, I think, I think we've had three passes at this and, uh.
And I will say, um, we did not have a single phone call from an actual business owner or resident concerning these signs. Um, and the other thing I would like to point out for the record that any business owner, any resident, has the power to propose a text amendment um, and go through the same process and have, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission, who is the only authority to make that decision, whether it's an approved regulation or denied as a regulation. And no one has done so, so.
I could, we, there was a letter from CROG that they did not find any conflict. Well. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on this application? Yes, sir.
Well, Anderson, I mean, I made pretty broad group. I have a few notes, but, uh, I'm also a director on the temper of commerce. Temper of Commerce did put a business survey and provided the results of that in the planning and zoning. Uh, I don't know if any of that was taken into consideration because of purity. From the, uh, temper commerce point of view, the merchant corridors, Route 5 and 140 in the warehouse point area are constrained by sign regulations that are suited best for areas like Dane Street, Broadway, not our major commercial corridor. Actually, at least we throw out. Okay. So going through this, I numbered these pages so I could make sense out of it. First page of these changes on, uh, residential. This is not easy to read, very difficult. I understand the games played with, uh, Microsoft products trying to add comments. Single, two, and three family dwelling, one sign, two square feet. Okay. Now residential uses regardless of zone. I'm in the B2 zone. I have a business in my home. So it looks to me like the residents can have a two square foot sign, but the business can have business signs. I don't know if that's true. It's not very clear. I don't see anything about home businesses.
There's a section, I believe, that says a home occupation can have a certain size sign in here.
At that point, you know, I had a tough time reading this.
And I, I mean, I'm not going to be able to find it. But I believe it's very specific.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm assuming this is the sign regulations, so it must be here.
Yeah, I just have to find it. For instance.
Being pointed out, that would be very nice.
Working on it.
Just have to find it.
Fair. I understand.
Well, the other thing is if you have a business in a residential, you would get the square footage allotment according to the frontage of your business. So it's more than likely going to be a.
Under 602.4, that one.
Sorry?
Under 602.4 gives you eyes. Each business permitted total one and a half square feet of sign area for each linear foot of a building.
Yeah.
That would have paused on.
You're covered whether you have a residential sign or a business sign in a residential building.
What we're doing, Danielle, is my last set of notes, we struck single, one, two, and three family dwelling and replaced that with home business. It didn't seem to be one.
I think that's because there was a reference. So I think the biggest thing is uses, residential uses versus business uses. I know Paul's asking about home occupation. Yeah. So I'm going to go to the home occupation section just to see first.
Or, or is it covered under what is the primary use?
Because the dwelling itself, we took out the residential and my notes say we were striking that and we were, I would say home business there.
Took out, I'm sorry.
This is the notes from the last meeting. What we talked about doing. And then.
But these are residential uses are not applying to, they're applying to an actual residence. So it is a dwelling. You might have a home occupation within your residence, but it's a residence. So you could have a business that happens to be non-conforming legal located in a residential zone. That's why we changed the word zone and uses.
Uses, right.
So this is particularly two houses, two dwellings, two actual dwellings. I think that's why we kept that. So you can have a sign. Congratulations Karen for graduating or.
I thought we weren't going to regulate anything like that. I congratulate.
Commercial is not a sign.
Right. Yeah, it's not commercial. So that maybe it's in our definition of what a sign is, it very specifically states commercial. And I think that kind of canceled out. I think the first round, our third, I think the, when we went through this the first time around, with the first workshop, we had taken this out and then they said it was still something we needed to have in there for residential uses.
That we had changed back to home businesses.
No, I don't know that at all. Tell you the truth. It might have come up, but it didn't get captured. Wait a minute. I stand corrected. I have the same note.
That's
This is my notes from the last.
This is my notes from the last time we talked about it.
Home businesses.
Right. And that's what I have in my notes too. Cause we had that applicant that had a home business just before we did this.
I had it done it.
Does this change the whole process of this? If we, are we looking to modify what we've done again?
Workshop, I mean.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying is do, do we need to continue this hearing and to start, do we have to
start over again?
Yeah. Does this mean we have to go back? Do we have to?
If we don't make any, if we don't make a substantial change, we wouldn't have to go back.
Okay.
We're addressing in this one residential uses, home business. And put parameters on that. Just add that one line. I can't imagine this.
Okay.
It's a significant change.
You're comfortable that we can do that right now? Or is this something that we'll have to?
Good takeout. Uh, 602.3 E, uh, C. Crossed out. Residential signs not contain any commercial advertising other than that of a permitted home occupation. That's all crossed out. Nothing replacing it.
Was that type of content?
Is this the?
Um, he's at 6023C. We were crossed out.
But it was originally an E and then it got hashed out.
Oh. It contain any commercial advertising other than that of a permitted home occupation. So that is yeah.
That doesn't apply. It could cross out, so.
Or content.
Don't see what replaces it. And that's okay. I'm just.
I mean, that's an easy fix.
Mm-hmm.
If I want to go back.
Okay.
I don't.
Un. Un-delete.
I don't, I don't know if you know if you want, I'm, I only know it makes a problem. No, I will tell you. Shall include the address doesn't make any sense. If it's on a building that's already has an address on it. An address on it. And what size can it be? What are you allowed to do? And talk about I think, I think the frontage doesn't apply. It's a residence. The whole frontage is a residence. You still got a business.
I think if we added home business to types of uses.
Okay. Yeah, no, this isn't.
Well, I got a question. If you're in a B2, how do they, and you run a business on your house, how do they tax you? Cause I know being.
Business gets taxed or.
Cause I know.
Property tax.
I have an office in my house and I paid. I, you know, I'm an R1 and I, I paid square footage taxes on my office for the town.
Only on my equipment. I can't answer that. You can talk to the assessor.
There you go, Jim.
Everything goes. It all goes through the assessor, how they operate. I don't, I can't tell you.
That's a good question to bring up.
I've been doing it since 1972, so. I'm afraid that's just the way it is. It's okay.
I don't know how that whole system works.
I know. And I'm not telling you I know how it works either.
So we can have Mr. Anderson finish his comments.
Yeah.
Move off this one and then
Yeah.
Something up another time. Cause I don't want a workshop.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, temporary business signs, I have to move second. What is that? 6028. Okay. As a clause in the second page, the temporary business signs will be permitted, blah, blah, blah. Uh, but paragraph three, temporary signs may be either an A-frame sign, self-standing, or a banner sign. Not both. I say, why not? What's the problem?
This is already now saying you can have an A-frame sign. So that would be something you're already allowed to have.
It says you can't have both. That line says not both.
Okay, so that's a typo we would need to.
I don't know that. I'm bringing it up. That's.
Yeah, that would be a typo because we're saying in these changes, if they're accepted, you can now have an A-frame sign as part of your business. So that would mean we could take away this A-frame sign part. So you can have a banner sign.
See what you're saying. You take out the A-frame sign. It doesn't apply. Hey, self-standing and banner, not both. Why? I don't get it. What difference does it make?
That's already as is in the regulations. That's not something that was being.
This is a public hearing to check the regulations.
No.
My suggestion is change it. It shouldn't say not both because businesses have to be able to advertise in a practical manner to get customers. They're trying to get business. They're there to make money. Not to play games with regulations. And we've got areas in town where it doesn't make any difference what you do, but we're trying to regulate the entire town with what I consider anti-business regulations. So you shouldn't be restricting. You can tell them they can have a self-standing sign. You got a definition or a banner sign. Why can't they have both? I don't get it. Okay. That's, sorry, but I'm pro-business absolutely. And when I look at places like Route 5 and 140, I don't care what they put up for signs. I want them to get business. We're here. The more business they get, the more taxes we get. We've had businesses leave because of sign regulations. I've talked to businesses that felt persecuted by zoning enforcement, not zoning enforcement's fault. Persecuted by zoning enforcement, trying to start up a business and constantly being told you can't do this, you can't do that. Persecuted by zoning enforcement, trying to start up a business and constantly being told you can't do this, you can't do that. How are they gonna start up a business and tell people they exist? The regulations are the problem, not zoning enforcement, okay? And it stinks. I don't think it matters what a business puts up for signs. Have them get a permit for whatever it is you want and let them do it. Because they, if they can't make money, they're out of business, it's that simple. I don't, I can understand it in other areas, but business areas should be made for business. Okay, six oh two nine, illumination. No flashing intermittent or intensity variation, blah, 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 blah. That's nonsense, we have them now. We've got the high school doing it, we've got the warehouse point fire district doing it, and it doesn't make any difference. So why can't a car dealer do it? Who cares? I don't get it, I think it's ridiculous to allow something by special youth and saying, people who need the business can't do it. Because it's a distraction to drivers, that's a lie. We already have them on state highways and nobody's distracted.
Flashing.
That shouldn't be.
Flashing lights would be a train wreck.
I never said flashing light.
Blinking or flashing light, whatever, so blinking.
Because the point is, we've got signs that are constantly changing in two locations in town on state highways. Because they came in and asked for it, and what'd they do? They went through CBA, they got a variance, that's garbage. They don't need to, that's ridiculous. If they're not a hazard, then they're not gonna be hazard anywhere else either. So there's nothing wrong with having control, but it's different to say you can't do anything. That's the point. So let's be pro-business and who cares about any of it except you can't have flashing? I don't have a problem with that, but why can't they have signs that make changes? The state does it on the highways all the time. Are we having accidents because they tell you there's a detour? No, it's all baloney. Signs are not a problem, illuminated signs are not a problem. Flashing is a problem, okay? Fast-changing signs are a problem. If it was a video on the sign, it's a problem, but that's not what it says, it says you can't do it at all. You can't do it at all is the problem, okay? Something else to look at. Six oh two twelve, prohibited signs, B. Who cares? We have those stupid men with the blowers there that wave around, so what? Now you might restrict where they're located, but you can't say you can't, it's all too negative. You can't do this, you can't do that, you can't do the other thing, that's the real problem. Instead of saying, no, regulate it, there's a difference. Put some regulations in there, you can't pull one of these things out by the street, you can't do this, gotta be so far set back. But otherwise, what difference does it make? I don't get it, I think it's anti-business. What's the next one? Uh, paragraph, um, uh, okay, prohibited signs, D. No signs shall be animated or flashing except for temperature device. I'm sorry, we have them now. I don't get it, I think it's the same thing, that is identical to the illuminated signs. It's in two places, let's complicate the regulations. And that is, again. You gotta allow with control. There's a difference between no, you can't. And then this poor person has to go out and tell everybody, you can't do this, you can't do that, blah, blah, blah. That is a waste of time, it's not productive, and it's anti-business, that's my opinion. I think this whole thing should be started over again, I think it's absolutely horrible. And so does the Chamber of Commerce, and so do a bunch of businesses who happen to be somewhere else right now. They don't live in this town, but they certainly pay. That's my opinion, there's my stuff, okay? Now you can go ahead and do what you want, but I'm a hundred percent against what we're looking at here, I think this is awful.
Thank you.
May I just remind the Planning and Zoning Commissioner that on June sixteenth, I read a memo into the record that addressed all of the concerns that were presented to us at the meeting before by the Chamber of Commerce, Commerce concerning businesses and signs. So that was read on June sixteenth at that meeting.
Any one else that would like to comment on this application? Is there anyone online that would like to comment on this application? You can stop sharing the screen, I said. If there's no one else online, okay. Okay. How would you like to proceed? Is there, are there any changes you'd like to make? Or are you gonna continue as is and, and have any future round of revisions? Since you're the applicant?
Well. A lot of work went into this.
I understand.
Take care of some inconsistencies to get out the content-based. Discrepancy because we can't have regs that do that.
That's, that's mandated to us by the state. We have to eliminate that.
A couple areas that were added, the A-frames.
Mm-hmm.
Being allowed on a daily basis to come out, advertise specials and, you know, attract folks in. We also had the, um, signage that we were allowing above the eve.
Yeah, on the roof, roof mounted signs, yeah.
Um, you know, at the discretion of the commission. So there are a lot of good things in here, I recognize, um, we can't satisfy everyone. I think the home business is a, a, a good call, we have residential uses and we have business uses. And that is just gonna be like that. That's the one thing that like we need to really clarify, I don't know that just I'm deleting.
If you had someone come through tomorrow with our, you know, coming forward to you wanting a home business sign, how, what reg would we use? How would we handle it?
Well, a home business.
We're gonna.
It's like this.
At this point, are we gonna call it what the primary use is? So follow the, the residential regs or are we gonna follow the business signage requirements?
We don't have anything in the residential regs really, other than this.
Hmm.
And if you're a home business, how big of a sign do you need? Business, if you're in the business district with a resident with a home, so like, that's like coming full circle.
I believe the home occupation rules say it can only be a certain percentage of the home as well, which would make that mean that the residence is the primary use. And thus would follow residence requirements, I would interpret it that way.
Signs.
Okay, so we, we don't have a, a black hole, we have some sort of way that we would handle that.
There's a mechanism if somebody wants to file a.
A request or a text amendment or?
They can.
I think what we were trying to do was make it so that we weren't regulating health signs like welcome or congratulations to a kid graduating. So we had, for residential uses.
Mm-hmm.
We had the multifamily and the mobile home parks, cause you needed a sign that said the name of the park or whatever. And we were going to strike single two and three family dwelling and replace that with the word home businesses. So that if you were a CPA, you could put up a sign saying you're a CPA or whatever. And similarly, I thought we had agreed in the header to six oh two point four, since we were trying to make it based on the use, not on the zoning district, I thought we had agreed to strike. It would say six oh two point four, business and industrial uses. And then it would say, this section shall apply to all zoning districts. And we had stricken business and industrial. So if we do those two things to what's in front of us, I think we have an approvable document.
Back to where we were.
That's what we had agreed to, we were going to notice on.
So I'm clear. Six oh two point four, business and industrial uses.
No, she just said strike, so like that, just.
It's okay, it's in it all out.
Trying to go, this is what I think we had agreed to. We struck that and that became home businesses, one sign. And I guess two square feet, I didn't know what the answer was there. And here, we struck districts and we would uses.
Yeah.
And here we struck business and industrial.
So we just read it applies to all zoning districts.
Yes, okay, that's what I thought we agreed to, that's what my notes say we agreed to. What I don't have is for a home business, it two square feet or is it one square foot or?
Mm-hmm.
What do you want that number to be so we can fix that?
Okay.
That's what I would propose we do. And proceed. I don't know what you want for size, do you wanna stay with the two square feet? For a home business? Is that what you want?
Well, I think that we were stuck at that point over here, I look at the notes from the mission.
Right, and I didn't have an answer in my notes.
Yeah.
Uh, what we said, so.
Three, three.
I actually two square foot.
Small.
Twelve inch by twelve inch.
At least three.
Right?
At least.
One, three, I think.
Too small.
One six square feet.
One six square feet.
A house.
And they can post not.
That's a two by three, it's not.
That's not big for a new window to say you're a CPA or you're whatever, do taxes or whatever.
Six square feet.
Two foot by three, but it's, it's a good size.
Yep.
It's a good size, should be able to see that. Okay, so what I have is where it said, single two and three family dwelling, now says home business.
Yeah.
One sign, six square feet.
Mm-hmm, agree.
Okay, and then down below at six oh two point four, I'm striking business and industrial.
Correct.
Okay.
That gets you.
There you go.
All right, um. I mean, this is, this is a process, you know, you, you can't fix everything at once and keep making strides and as, as requests come in or as we find things that just aren't working, we try to improve on them. I will, I will make one comment because, you know, in my, my prior career, I was a facilities manager. And I would have people come to me all the time and say, we need a sign for this, you know, people are doing this, we need a sign for that. And, and I, I tell you, it's from the time you walk in that door till you hit the building, there's seventeen signs. If you can retell me what five of them are, I'll give you your sign. I never had a person that could do it. You reach a point of sign saturation, where there's so many signs that it's just out of Vegas. You know, and you just, people don't pay attention to them. So to say the business do whatever you want, put up whatever sign you want, you'll reach a point where it's just ridiculous and it has to be a step, so this is what we're trying to do. We're starting to move the needle. And I, I truly agree that we can probably do more to help businesses, but it's gonna have to be baby steps and see how things go.
Yeah.
I think we were trying to make it easier in what we had done.
I, I think we.
Clear.
So everybody's got any further questions or comments?
No.
And I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on application PZ twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one. The applicant owner is East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission, requesting a text amendment to the East Windsor zoning regulations, section six oh two, sign regulations.
We have a motion to close the public hearing, do we have a second?
Second.
By Dave, any further discussion? Hearing none, a call for vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 The hearing is closed. So we're making two annotative changes to what we had previously put out here. Need any other further verbiage or clarifications? We just.
Yeah.
Okay. Nobody has anything else, I'll entertain a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion to approve application PZ twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one. The applicant owner is East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission, requesting a text amendment to the East Windsor zoning regulations, section six oh two, sign regulations. And the approval is contingent upon striking in section six oh two point three. The line that says, single two and three family dwelling, replacing that with the word home business. And setting the maximum number and size of signs as one sign, six square feet. And in section six oh two point four, striking business and industrial. In the sentence that says, this section shall apply to all strike business and industrial zoning districts. And then it's approved as proposed with those changes. Effective what date?
Um, let's see, October first.
Effective October first.
We have a motion to approve the application, do we have a second?
Second.
By Dave. Any further discussion? And I'm a call for vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item. We have no old business, no new business, under other business, we have our CEO report. I guess we're down to three items.
Three, yeah. So, and, um, I know two of them at least, it's, um, in the citation, like the zoning violation, the, but they have good state citations, so getting, taking it there. Um, ongoing the, the horses at Holcombe Terrace.
Any progress being made at all or any response from me?
Um, I think Daniel's been in conversation with folks, the, the owner's offsite and, um, from what I understand, the horses are, sometimes you see them, sometimes you don't. But, yeah, it's just been going on. A lot. So he's been getting citations and I think the next step is to issue an assessment, the letters go out the very. The letters go out, it's a very formalized procedure, so it's going back.
Very good.
What's, what's South Main? I'm gonna look it up.
South Main is, um,
That's.
A gentleman who wishes to open a used car dealership. He currently is at Full Throttle. And, um, he brought in lots and lots of millings.
I see that, you know.
Three.
Ag turf.
They just took out a house there. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I see it.
Just has all the.
So, um, J R Russo is working on his site plan.
That's it, that's it. House came down in a lot behind it. Because, because flower, is that flower power behind there? Yeah, flower power.
Yep.
Next one behind it, yep.
Working practice.
Being elderly.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I've been about Chamberlain Road. I tend to.
Okay, we'll do that under our, uh, final, so we have, uh, no correspondence, no business meeting, and no need for an executive session, so, and if we'd like to bring up something else in front of the commission, go right ahead.
Just curious about Chamberlain Road. I go back into town and see quite a lot of it. Or, I know there's wetlands over there, and just.
That castle had a house that recently kicked down to eighty. Eighty-one or seventy-one.
Okay, that's old.
Um, just the number on the house. It was in foreclosure.
Yep.
Um, it's been bought by Mr. Chapman. He is clearing the property with the intention of leasing it out for farming. Could be tobacco, he's leasing, he wants to lease the land out for farming. He's on the wetlands agenda for October first, to get an as-of-right determination.
He came and did it without going to wetlands, and he came in to clear it.
Well, he came in, when he started clearing, he came in and, um, talked to us about what he wanted to do, and he's, and he's aware, he has the plans, he knows. Danielle spoke with him earlier this week. Someone had called in because we're gonna get rain. And, um, talked to him about installing.
Silt benches.
Silt benches and the like. And, um, yeah, so she, he got on the next agenda for, in the wetlands, but that was before this most recent phone call.
So they gave him a stop in the system or something, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, like.
In the wetland area, at the, you know, when, when Danielle went out there, it's pretty far away from it, and, um.
That, there's a wetland area just off of the house, too. There's a lower level that hasn't disturbed, yeah. It has, he's been in, when in that, and usually there would be an agent decision. I saw nothing in writing on that. I had to live to that, when I. Oh, I had the trees on my property. I had to live to that, and I've seen nothing for Chamberlain Road. I'm just.
Yeah.
Curious, is everybody living to the same rules?
Does everybody do what they want?
Yeah. Exactly, exactly. I did. I made sure I followed that. I'd be messed around at one seventy-two.
Yeah.
I didn't do anything without permits.
So, in the wetlands, uh, you know, I was not aware of such a thing. I knew he was clearing trees, and um, I know that Danielle spoke to him yesterday.
Okay.
So, I, I can go out there with her and just walk it and see where we're at with it, take some pictures. We'll inform what's going, you know.
Or if it's.
And the meeting.
Farming as of right, farming as of right is a thing here, and you can.
Well.
Regrading. You can't, because remember, um, one of the Holden's came in and wanting to regrade all and take out dirt and regrade it.
Mr. Chapman's not taking anything off-site.
Okay.
What, um.
Looks like they're.
I have a video of stuff coming off today.
Trees, like gravel?
Video showed them putting something in tractor trailers and leaving today.
What something?
I can't tell from the video. I'll find out in the morning. I'll, I'll exact, exact, ask exactly what it is. As my son drove by.
What?
He said, hey, what's going on?
Mr. Holden wanted to do was extract about two hundred and fifty thousand.
We shot that down.
Yes.
He tells them, no, and now it looks like somebody else is moving dirt there.
Yeah, I know that they're regrading for, for farming, but I didn't, I didn't know. Maybe the trees are going off, the stump, I don't know what, what's happening.
There's a mine, US Mine, right around the corner. It's now a solar field. And then, uh, Booton took all the, fill out a, grab a lot of his, which is right next door to where Chapman is, so. Big vein of gravel running from there.
Yeah, they know it's there.
And Chapman runs a separation system for gravel. So.
I watch for a gravel oper, illegal gravel operation.
Yeah.
Maybe just clearing the land to dry it out. I don't know.
Well, either way, we'll go out there, and he does have, he's on the agenda for, for wetlands. He knows. He knows that we're watching the gravel piece, because he came in, we talked to him about it.
Boy, got everybody in town driving by that road.
Yeah.
We, we all, we all get phone calls from people.
Came back and, holy cow, I can see over there now. Wow.
It's gone stalking.
Stick a lumber left.
No, no, not a bit.
Weird.
Anything else?
No, that was just my.
Yeah, the camera's, the camera's been voice activated for the last twenty minutes, and it's boom, 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 or play a phone watch now.
Nobody in has anything else? I'll take a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at eight forty-eight.
Eight forty-eight, guys.
Nice.
Thank you for that.